Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the school committee to order. It is Thursday, April 4th. This meeting is being recorded by WCTV and audio recorded by Jamie Wixton. Would you please stand for the pledge?
Congratulations into the fire of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have public participation, but not seeing any members on the public tonight. We will move on to good news. Joyce?
So yesterday was Para Professional Appreciation Day. So I just wanted to take a minute to shout out to all the paras in our district who do so much every day for all of our students. I also wanted to say I got to go to the middle school play last week. They did a great job as always, such a great performance. And the sets were really, really great. And I got to go to the elementary school. So thanks to the elementary school for having me at the bunny breakfast, breakfast with the Easter bunny. That was also a lot of fun. A lot of families, so well attended. It was really great. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I had the pleasure of taking five of Scott's wonderful students to BSU this morning. Great bunch of kids, Mr. Palladino.
That's good to hear.
Thank you.
I just want, spring sports have started and that's always fun to see. That people outside and weather's going to start getting warm and...
You say so.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah.
It is a promise, yes. So it's good to see. Spring is...
Very good. Thank you. We have two sets of minutes to approve from March 7th and March 21st. Does anyone have any corrections to the minutes?
Believe it or not, I do. This is just to prove that...
Which date?
March 21st. This is just to prove that our esteemed Mrs. Wixton is human.
I know.
Comes the hammer.
Okay. Under Student Opportunity Act, I tried to highlight it and the highlight didn't work.
The 2022?
It said image and it was supposed to say imagine. It said image and you meant, or it's, imagine made a lot of sense. I'm trying to find it, but I'm sure you'll find it before I will. And second, the second typo was... Sorry, as I said, I tried to highlight it and the highlighting didn't, didn't work. Okay, shared his frustration and can only image. So that's the top of, what page is that? Oh, come on, Jeff.
I see it.
You see it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then... Sorry, Mr. Chair. There's one more. How about if I just get with Jamie and find it later? That works for you. It wasn't important to the content or substance, shall we say.
Any other questions or comments about either March 7th or March 21st?
Oh, I found it. On the very top were the, I made a comment about the town administrator. Mrs. West does not want it to be lost that the town administration, I said administrator, you could say administration, but then the next word, next line, it has, it should be courtesy and it says curtsy. That's it. Thank you.
I guess.
So could I have a motion to accept both sets of minutes with the correction of image to?
So moved.
Imagine and courtesy to courtesy.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 4-0-0. Thank you. Looks like we're not going to have a student representative report tonight, so, or student advisory?
We were hoping she was going to be able to take both.
Double duty, okay.
One or two advisory students are not able to make it.
She just wrote to me and told me she can't make it.
All right. Well, in my report, I'll tell you what she was going to say.
Okay.
In regards to the student advisory council.
So next up, we do have the principal reports. If all three of you want to come up or do we want to do one in safety and numbers?
Safety and numbers, eh?
All right. Why don't we start in the elementary and we'll work our way up to grade level.
Okay. Greetings, school committee. Happy April. In March, for attendance, staff, 95% attending 18 days of school. And students, 93.27% attended school in the month of March. And happenings, a lot of happenings going on. We had our second day of ELA MCAS. Outstanding effort by the grade three students. I only had two students absent today. So I had 158 out of 160 students attend school to make sure they had their sessions complete. In addition, yesterday on our session one, I had six students that never even finished the test. So they spent six hours, eight-year-olds, six hours on the test, working diligently. So kudos to the students, the families for making sure their children are there on time and the teachers for their persistence and effective effort throughout the year. So thank you to that. I just left also, speaking of community events and other events, I just left a wonderful puppet show hosted by the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Group. Jane Fondulas chairs that, CFCE. And this was for incoming kindergarten students. So it was their time to shine, to start getting together and enjoy a puppet show together. And we had over 125 students and 70 adults at this event that we just left. So it was exciting there. I have passed for your, just for you to have our events coming up, April, May, and June. You can see it's quite jam-packed with exciting things going on at the Wareham Elementary School. Just in academics, I know that Principal Kotay and I shared about one extracurricular math program we do is ST Math. And ST Math, I just wanted to share some data about that. Speaking of participation, this year I have 160 students at Wareham Elementary who have completed their ST Math journey, which means they had gone, they've gone through the whole grade curriculum. And last year I had 53 students to complete their journey. So over triple of participation in this program. So again, that's thanks to the students first and foremost for their effort, but also the families, because a lot of this ST Math is some of their homework that they work on this online program. So I just wanted to share some of that data out there with you. In enrollment, I know that everybody gets curious about what the enrollment is for kindergarten thus far. It's 128 students we have enrolled in kindergarten. And so we're moving right along with our enrollment in kindergarten. And I suspect there will be at least 60 more. We are in April. We tend to see a big climb in the summer months. And at this time, I'll take any questions you may have.
Jeff?
So ST Math, they've finished their journey and it's early April.
Yes.
How does that work?
Well, it's, it's just a processes of, and you saw from Ms. Kotay, lessons that they complete. So they have to go through lesson after lesson. Once they have completed all of the lessons, they have completed the journey for that year and...
What happens the rest of the year?
Well, it's an extracurricular. They're done for the year. So they don't really work through ST Math any longer. They just, they, it is extracurricular. It is not...
It's extracurricular.
Yes, it's not our main curriculum. It is just an enrichment program. But I know when we did our presentation that there is a correlation to their results for testing and MCAS. And so I'm looking forward to seeing those results work and pan out for us.
Do you have any results yet?
I do. I don't have them, I can get them.
We have winter results.
I have my winter results.
Does it give you reason for optimism?
I always think my winter results go down whenever we do those reports. I feel like they go down. So I'm always optimistic. I'd like to continue to see more green and blue than any of the red and yellow, but... Yeah.
Oh, one last thing. And really it's for all three of you, but I look at the New York Times every day and they had a cover story about absenteeism. And you could literally put in your district and get a number. I don't know how they do that, but they did it. We were slight, and this was strictly the percentage of your kids that were chronically absent. Okay, which is, and it's a national tragedy what's happening. Wareham, according to this database, who knows how accurate it is, was actually slightly better than average. How are you feeling about chronic absenteeism at the moment?
I feel like I have some students who are chronically absent. I get those reports from our attendance personnel and our social workers. We are working through the court systems in some cases to call attention to the families to make sure that their students are in school. To me, any child who misses school, you know, consistently is a problem. So it should be addressed and it is being addressed quite well. And difficult conversations are happening to ensure that these students get back on track and consistently be at school.
What are the top one or two reasons why it happens?
They're sick.
Literally, it's just they're sick.
That's what we get.
That's what you get. Do you believe it?
No.
Right.
I think there's a myriad of reasons. I would say that some would say anxiety of school, anxiety of the institutional setting, or just lack of effort from getting the kid to school, getting students to school.
Is there a correlation between kids that are struggling academically and kids who are chronically absent?
Oh, yes. Especially as time goes on, when they, by the time they get to middle school, because the knowledge piece is just...
Yeah.
At what point do any of you file for like pre-CRA's or CRAs?
So the court dictates when we can do that. So in a term, 45 days, it has to be more than eight days. Okay?
Right.
So more than eight unexcused, there's the key. So we have lots of excused because we have lots of doctors' notes coming in.
Does the doc, just out of curiosity, do they just say he's, this child's been seen or does it say?
A lot of times it says they've been seen, please excuse the absence.
Right.
It's amazing. My son had a physical at 3:00 the other day and they gave us the physical form and underneath the physical form was an excuse for the day. And I said, why are you giving me excuse for the day? He was in school all day. And they're like, oh, it's just procedure. We give them to everyone. The one thing we've been doing the last couple of years is having our nurse follow up on all notes. And I know you all have been doing that as well. And it's been helpful because I think there's some pediatrician's offices that hand them out like candy. And I think with us pushing back a little bit, they've been a little bit better. But it was during the pandemic, it was like just take the candy and eat whatever you want.
One of the problems that we're seeing, and I'm assuming the other schools are seeing, is there's so many urgent cares now, okay? So you can take a child to urgent care and they get a note from different urgent cares. So it's not from necessarily a pediatrician's office.
But that's not, our biggest issue, at least at the high school, is kids not turning in any notes, just not coming in. That's been the tougher part, like at least with a notice, like, well, you can't, you know, we can push back with a nurse, but after that, the conversation's over. And our problem at the high school, we talk about CRAs, three-quarters of our kids don't qualify because of their age. You know, that's the tough part. I wish, I wish they all would qualify because we have seen some traction when we can do that. But the problem is we can really only do it with eighth and ninth graders and maybe a few, you know, a couple of times.
CRA is a child requiring assistance and it gets the DA's office involved, basically, right? Or representatives from the DA's office.
The juvenile probation, not necessarily the DA. It really, I mean, it's, it's really helpful to get supports in place to the families that need it. You know, when it's done properly, we've seen a lot of growth in the students. We have, we were just evaluating, we have a spreadsheet of all the CRAs we file. And we talk about which ones are active and which ones are inactive. And I was pretty excited that out of maybe 12 CRAs, we've seen a change in two students' behavior, which is sometimes you file 12, you get one student to change their behavior.
And the courts, they have a stay program. We met with Mr. Foot, who works in the juvenile department in the courts, and it's called STAY. So the courts will come in and meet with the families, with us, right into the school to have these conversations. But there is a program called STAY that we're using from the, from the courts too. So they're on it to work collaboratively with us.
What's, what's great is, you know, we have to document attendance for multiple years. And it, all three schools, I think, are doing a great job of identifying this at an early age because by the time it gets to the high school, it's usually not like a one-off. And, you know, a lot of times we'll be handed, as Tracy will call me over the summit and say, hey, Scott, we still have two active CRAs on these two kids coming in as eighth graders. And I'm sure it's done at the elementary and the middle. So it's great to see that, you know, everyone is on the same page with that. I can assure you, when I was assistant principal and I was following, filing CHINs petitions, there were CHINs, formerly CHINs, CRAs and what they're called now. You know, this, the attendance issues were starting in kindergarten. And we used to have to, you probably remember, we used to have to fill out attendance from kindergarten all the way up to the current grade. And it was, I'm not sure it was always being addressed, but I will tell you, over the last seven or eight years, I think we've been in sync from, all the way from pre-K to, you know, 10th grade, making sure that they're filed, so no one's really slipping through the cracks in that respect.
I have, well, a friend of mine who used to be the head of Wareham Pediatrics. And I'm just thinking, and I have a strong relationship with South Coast Hospitals group who has the urgent care facilities. It would be really interesting, Mr. Superintendent, if we actually asked to meet with them.
I met with, pre-COVID, I met with Wareham Pediatrics.
Excellent.
A counselor, actually the counselor that goes to court for CRAs came with me. And, and we opened up a great discussion. I think the problem was COVID happened and now their offices are just so inundated, so busy.
But if parents knew that they were going to not automatically get a rubber stamp, you know, excuse. And, and I don't, I can't believe that Wareham Pediatrics or South Coast Hospitals wants to get a reputation for contributing to the absenteeism problem.
No, I think, I think what's going to happen in the nation is we need to come together with the medical field. And even if it's anxiety, the worst thing you can do for a child that has anxiety is to keep them home.
It snowballs.
Yeah. So our counselors are all trained, you know, we have different programs and, and we can help get them, but we can't get them to the door. But once they get to the door, we can help get them in the door and, and in school. And usually, once they come to school, it's a success, so.
Exactly.
Our nurse formerly worked for Wareham Pediatrics, so like she calls people on the cop, but she knows who's signing them. And I think that's true for some of the other schools as well. So there's, I think there's greater accountability in Wareham for those notes than there may be in the next town over.
Well, I admire what you're trying to do. Keep it up.
Any questions for Bethany still?
Yes. So you talked about a program where they come into the school. Are families, are the majority of families open to that? Do they appreciate the help in getting the kids to school?
I think they're reluctant at first, but once the meeting occurs, they realize that we're there to support.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy, you're up for the middle school?
So for the middle school, student attendance is at 93%, keeps being at 93%. Attendance rate is 94%. We had Willy Wonka Kids production. It was a wonderfully entertaining production. Great turnout by the community and our advisors did such a fantastic job. So that was so exciting to see. We had term three come to an end today. So term four begins tomorrow at Wareham Middle School. Can't believe we are in term four. That means there's 45 days left of school for us. So that's a scary thought. But we have some exciting things as Wes does on our docket for May and June. Field days, field trips, award ceremonies, dances. So it should be an exciting term. Questions, concerns?
Tracy? I'm sorry, Tracy?
Further on the agenda, there's, under the gifts, there's $500 for Unified PE, it says. Can you tell us what that is going to look like at the middle school?
Yes. So we're just starting that. And the high school, of course, has their program, so they came to us. At the middle school, it's going to look a little different this year. We're starting it inside the school with our sub-separate programs. One of our special education teachers is running it. And they're running socials throughout the school year, every month for students within the program. We're also attending the Unified Sports Day at Tabor, so it'll be part of that. And that's coming up, is it, the week after vacation, so, yeah. Okay, so we're excited about that. Thank you.
$500 enough to do much?
No, it's for materials and supplies. That's what they've given it to us for. So it's just to encourage it, some of the stuff we were already starting, so to enhance the program that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Palladino?
All right. Get off the hook pretty easy there. All right.
We're saving it for you.
That's what I was thinking. All right, so student attendance is as follows. Eighth grade, 93%, ninth grade, 92%, 10th grade, 93%, 11th grade, 92%, 12th grade, 95%. Overall attendance, 94% for the students. Staff attendance is 97% for the month.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Yes, sir.
That math didn't work out.
Staff attendance, 97%?
No. The overall for students was what?
94%.
Right. And most of the numbers you read before that were 92s and 93s.
I'll send you the document. I rounded, I didn't give you decimals. There were decimals. It was, I didn't round up or down. I just gave you the flat number.
He does that pretty fast in his head, doesn't he?
Yeah. And don't forget...
And by the way, senioritis, you obviously don't have.
No, there's no such thing as... Well, we've curved that. Do you remember how we curved it? You don't remember? You approved it. So we curved...
Oh, related to senior privileges?
Close, senior finals. So if they have an 80 or above for a final grade, they don't have to take their senior, senior exam. So that, we did that to curve the senior slide. Because to your point, what was happening was after term three was over into term four, there was a significant slide. And so what we did was we came up with this plan that if they were in good standing, good attendance, good grades, discipline, et cetera, and they had an 80 or above, they could opt out of their final exam. And their final grade would be their final exam grade. So it served us really well to keep the students in school and keep them focused and avoid that senior slide, because the seniors kind of drive the bus in the school. And if the seniors are sliding, everyone else going, ooh, they're, you know, they're doing that, let me do my thing. So it's worked out really well. The seniors appreciate it. They still have to come back, obviously, for the senior exit interview, but they really appreciate it.
Well, they also can't play a sport if they're absent the day before the match.
Unfortunately, a lot of them are athletes, so that doesn't hurt either.
Yeah. But they're all, also, I hate to harp on the math, they're also the smallest group, correct?
Correct.
So they had the highest number and the math didn't work.
I'll send it to you so you can, you can fine tune it for me, but it comes right from college. I don't, you know, I don't touch it, so.
All right, blaming the computer software.
No, no, no. I think that, next time I'll put it to the tent. I tried to just round it to the whole number. But if you add in the, you know, 93.6 and 93.4, it comes up with that number. I don't do the math on that. I just translated onto this document. The, so some, some good news, I know someone took my, some of my good news in regards to spring sports. But they did start, although you wouldn't know it based on the weather outside. The first couple of weeks are always tough, but I'm really happy that we didn't have snow because there have been years we've had to snow blow the tennis courts and the track.
I remember them vividly.
Yes, and so we haven't had to do that. And fortunately, it stayed rain today. So, you know, this is now their third week of sports and they're starting to have matches and games and meets, which we're seeing. And I did check next week's weather. It is going to warm up, so the coaches will be happy. And it's great to see the kids out and it's a sign of the school year culminating here very shortly. We as well finished MCAS this week. We had the eighth grade ELA MCAS and we had unbelievable attendance. I was very pleased. I think we averaged two eighth graders out each day and they were both excused on both days. So tremendous attendance. They were very focused. Dr. DeAndrea came by and took a look at it as well. And I think things went really well for the eighth graders. 10th grade is obviously a much smaller scale, but last week we had the 10th grade MCAS for ELA as well. All four days, I'm very happy with. So I'm looking forward to seeing some correlation with some great schools, so more to come on that. School events, we had the DECA auction on March 24th, well-attended. We have a professional auctioneer who also graduated from Wareham High School, Phil Gomes, has done a great job for us with that. I think he's been doing it for about seven years now and he's, he's unbelievable. They raise a good amount of money there to help support the students going to the international competition. Our grades closed last Friday. Report cards go out tomorrow during advisory. And our grade eight dual enrollment interviews are happening this week and next week. Appreciate the support from the middle school. They do a great job of organizing that for us. We have, today, we had the WHS Entrepreneur Day in-school field trip. And they brought in a lot of local professionals to speak with the DECA students, so that was a great event. And then Sunday morning, our eighth grade students leave for Washington DC and we hope to be back at 9:30 on Wednesday night.
How are they getting there?
I'm sorry?
How are they getting there?
We have a coach bus.
Interesting.
As always. And we are looking forward to being back at 9:30 on, on Wednesday night. Our initiatives have pretty much stayed the same. We're kind of in full testing mode. We took a look at the schedule for the month of April and into May. And there were three days where we won't be performing some kind of testing in our building. So it's a very busy time with MCAS, AP exams, IB exams. And the students are doing a great job with that. I did want to hit a little bit on student advisory. I know Gisella couldn't be here. She was planning on it. She and I met today and something must have come up, probably with transportation. But she was definitely planning on being here. We had a great conversation today at the end of advisory. And there's a couple initiatives they're really working on, which are going to tie into some of the things that we're trying to do. So we, as you know, we received the grant for the alternatives to cell phone usage and the committee's been working really hard. I know I updated you at the last meeting about that. And they've concluded their site visits to various schools and that's been really fruitful for them. Now they have come up with three potential, I'm going to call them apparatuses in the classrooms that they'll utilize. And in the teacher's room, and Joyce, I think you had a chance to see it the other day, they have them on display for the teachers to look at. And what they're going to be doing is surveying, actually the survey went out for the staff already. They're going to survey the staff, survey the students and try and come up with, is there a device that will work really well to store cell phones? So the idea is that when you walk into a classroom, there is a device that you store your cell phone for the time you're in class. And they're really, I appreciate what they're trying to do. And we didn't just buy, you know, 55 of certain devices without getting feedback. So I think we're working smarter through this process and making sure at the end we have a device that is going to be useful and people are going to own as part of the upcoming plan. So once that survey is done, they will come up with some language that we will be adding to our handbook, which in the middle of May, we'll be back here at school committee to discuss that. So we'll have a lot more then. So Student Advisory Council is working on that survey. And then, once they get done with that, they're going to have another survey they're going to send out in regards to handbook. You know the hot button items. Dress code is going to be discussed by the students. I think we have a pretty good document with dress code, but you know, they always want to revisit it and the staff always wants to revisit that as well. Our school council is going to talk about that in our May meeting. So we've got a lot of filtration to go through until we get here. I think it's like the 18th of May, we're back here talking about that. And the other pieces that I know all those committees are going to want to talk about will be the cell phone policy. And then we always like to just fine tune the discipline. Those are kind of the three hot button issues in the handbook. A lot of it is policy that we really can't change, obviously, and important dates and things of that nature. So that's, that's going to be coming up. And the Student Advisory Council is playing a big role in that. So that's my report for tonight.
Thank you. Questions for Scott? Jeff?
So, you mentioned there was a trip to DC, starting when?
Sunday.
Okay. So, there's another trip starting at 10:30 tomorrow morning that is taking one of my best tennis players away from, that Matt Stanton is. Where is that trip going?
To Springfield.
Massachusetts?
Yes.
Okay. How are they getting to Springfield?
They have a bus. You're not driving it?
A school bus? Regular school bus?
I believe so, I, yes.
Fascinating. Anyway.
That's a big key club conference. And they're being recognized for having an unbelievable amount of service hours.
No, I mean, it sounds like a great trip and.
They do it every year.
Matt does a great job. It just happens to be a bad, bad time for.
Well, I don't know if the courts are going to dry out in time. They're talking about rain tomorrow morning, too. And if it's a home court, if it's a home meet, we have to say.
Yes.
I'll put a bug in Ed's ear for you.
No. Ed will ask me. It will end up being my decision.
Okay.
Trying to schedule, anyway.
Safety first. Safety first in the court.
Exactly right.
And these courts don't dry out that well, remember that.
Yes.
Especially when he's out there with a hose.
Just do it before the buses show up.
On a more serious note, thanks to, thanks to the phys ed department, Sam in particular, I have what I call the quad. Four eighth graders who I think are probably a future, there are definitely some gold scholars in there, maybe even a valedictorian.
That's a surprise.
I know. But they just finished English MCAS?
Correct.
Okay. And so, they know I like to ask them about academics. And so, don't get mad. I asked them, by the way, I said, do you think a school should be judged by how well the students do on MCAS? And you want to guess what they said?
They probably said yes.
No.
Really?
They said no.
Okay.
And they said, because we took hours to do the MCAS. And we watched people spend 30 minutes and say, I'm done. How much of a problem is that? I.e., just simply lack of concern, effort, whatever? Because the students have a point.
Right. Right. It's, this is, it's a minority, it's a, it's a real small number.
A real small number.
Yeah, I would say 5% to 10%. It's not the rule.
Yeah, but 5%.
But 5% to 10%, yeah.
And really drag down your total.
They can, they can.
And it goes beyond the students, though. There's many parents that don't believe in MCAS, so.
In fact, the MTA is taking a position on it.
Correct.
And thankfully, the governor is saying, no way.
Yes. So, so I, I think that becomes a little prevalent, too. So, it depends on the home to see if, you know, a parent told me that MCAS was not a reflection of their child, it was a reflection of my teachers. And I said, well, in a way. But she says, well, you give it because you want to judge your curriculum. And I said, well, not really. There's also a huge parent population that believes it only counts in high school, so they don't care what their child does up until 10th grade. So, so there's those, I mean, it is, it is prevalent. Not only in Wareham, but in other towns.
Do you agree it's a 5% to 10% problem?
I would say it's closer at the middle school to a 5, probably, percent. I did have someone that finished in 27 minutes on sixth grade MCAS. And I did say to that child, because you can see, and I said, you won the not-so-good prize today, and you finished in 27 minutes. And a very bright young man. And he said, really? I go, yeah, not good. So.
A bright young man.
Yes, yeah, 27 minutes. There's no way you can finish in 27.
No.
You can't. Honestly, I'm pretty angry at the Department of Ed today. Yesterday, the sixth graders had two extremely, as the kids tell me, difficult essays. And I had kids painstakingly, I'm pulling their Chromebooks away from them at 2:00. Typically, the third graders, the fourth graders, but typically, my kids will finish. I don't think many adults in six hours can write two well-written five-paragraph essays or more. And that's what we asked sixth graders to do yesterday. And by the way, Jesse says it should have taken them 90 minutes. So, it did not take them 90 minutes. And I, and, you know, I think one essay in a day is fair. I think the two essays, and by the way, one of those essays was a pilot essay. So, it's just unfair. The kids don't know which one was pilot.
Of course.
It's just, you know, it's painstaking to watch top students struggle through six hours.
I do think that, you know, we, the 10th graders, we have the benefit of having that added leverage. There is a little more seriousness that goes on.
Yeah.
Because they know it's graduation requirement. But for the eighth graders, they're like, well, we don't need to really pass till 10th grade. And it's like, well, if you don't pass in eighth grade, you're going to be taking remedial classes in ninth grade, so pass.
I have a cute story. My grade three are brand new to this, you know, eight, they're eight years old. And one student finished, and it says 100% complete. He goes, I got a 100. Perfect. There we have it. So, we feel very successful at Wareham Elementary School.
I want to thank the principals. And Mr. Palladino, I want to thank you for educating me tonight, because I thought the senior slide was what was attached to Jeff's swimming pool. So, I want to thank you very much.
Maybe.
Educating me on that tonight.
Thank you.
But thanks to all the principals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, superintendent's report. Dr. DeAndrea, you're up.
Thank you. Okay, let's start with, we have some gifts that I would like the, to ask the school committee to accept. We are receiving weekly delivery of food bags for the entire district. For the entire district, it's about 70-plus families are taking advantage of this. This is food bags that, that students who need it over the weekend can take home on a Friday. And it's been really, really helpful for some of our families. And we receive those from Cape Kids Meals. So, I ask you to accept those gifts. Do you want me to do all of them?
Yeah, let's do all of them.
$500 from Special Olympics. We talked a little bit about that earlier for the Unified PE program at the Wareham Middle School. Thank you very much for that. And $3,000 from Atlantic Subaru. This is going to be for six classrooms at the Wareham Middle School that can use $500 each for Adopt a Classroom program. And you can look on that online. But the teachers that are able to take advantage of it can go online, and there's a number of different items they can buy for their classroom using the $500. And so, thank you to Atlantic Subaru. So, I ask school committee to accept those gifts.
With our thanks, so moved.
Yes. Second. Very generous.
Agreed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 4-0-0.
And a less exciting note, the bill and payroll warrants. I ask that you approve those.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain 4-0-0.
Okay. And just a little unfinished business. Last meeting, there was a presentation about the Student Opportunity Act. And we need to submit to the Department of Education that the school committee voted to accept the plan that was presented on March 21st. So, I ask that you vote to approve that plan.
This is the draft for 582,000?
That's the one, yes.
Do you have a question?
Question, Joyce?
And I know Kristen isn't here. The 582 is above and beyond the funding that the, the schools get through the town? Above and beyond Chapter 70?
It, it's money that's, that.
Let me tell you why I'm asking. Because, you know, I've seen your, your budget proposal many times. And one of the offsets, well, I love it. I'm not saying it's a bad thing.
You do.
Well, I don't love the bottom line.
Thank you very much.
It's a very good presentation. And so, there's a line in there, is it $125,000, $125,000 as an offset?
Okay.
So, that's why I'm asking.
That's a separate, that's a separate grant. That is not.
So, that has nothing to do with this Student Opportunity Act?
Nope. Has nothing to do with. This is, this is money that is supposed to be embedded in Chapter 70 money. It's not going to be specifically identified that this is the part of the SO money, and this is Chapter 70.
Right.
It's embedded in it, and they're going to give it as much as they possibly can through Chapter 70. It's, it's not perfectly clear how this is, this is working, but that's what we're being told.
Whoa, then I have a question.
Well, so, it almost seems like, here's your Chapter 70 money, but this, this chunk of it, we want you to make a plan and share it with us of how you're going to use it, right?
Right. Right. That, that's, so.
They're essentially telling you how to spend $582,000 of your too-small Chapter 70 funds. Is that a fair statement?
Right. Well, they're not telling us how to spend. What, what, what they're, what they want is they want to ensure that school districts are identifying their, their students who are not succeeding and putting plans together to ensure that they're doing whatever they can to meet the needs of those students.
What school district wouldn't do?
Exactly. Exactly.
Really?
What we presented is what we do anyways.
Well, that makes sense, because it really is. So, I'm glad you said that.
It's good practice. It's what we should be doing.
Exactly.
And it's what we will be doing.
So, I, I'm not going to say what I was going to say. Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the plan that was presented.
Let the record show, Jamie, that Jeff Sweat bit his tongue.
So, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain 4-0-0.
Thank you very much. And that is all I have.
All right. So, we are on school committee report, and we have a policy review vote on an item that we looked at briefly.
Well, so, Jamie, get.
This is the BMI stuff?
I have it.
Right. I, I did, I did. This was in your packet.
This is the Measuring Body Mass Index?
I got it.
Yeah.
Yes. The one that we tabled, or we postponed from last time, because I had a question about the language.
Right.
So, so Matt made some changes to it, based on that conversation.
Correct.
Right.
And a little bit of homework that I did.
Yes. And I also had a conversation with Scott when I was at the high school this week. But it does appear, and I was asking him questions, and, you know, was this going to conflict with the way things are done? But I, Dr. DeAndrea did say that he spoke to the nurse, and that this, this document will work with how we do it.
With, with the revisions.
With the revisions, yeah.
Now, is this the same document that had the physical information in it?
Yes, and it still does. The part that says that the school physician will examine athletes is struck out.
Right.
That was the major contention.
Yes.
So, any other questions from any committee members on the revised policy? And if not, I would ask if we have a motion to agree to the Measuring Body Mass Index policy. So moved.
Well, so, it's the, the Measuring Body Mass Index policy is being removed. And this physical examinations of students is being added.
So, what is the second one called? I'm sorry.
Physical examinations of students.
Oh, I see. Okay, I'm sorry. I was on the wrong one.
And the information about examining students for BMI.
Was taken out.
No, it's in there.
No, but.
The, the poll, the Measuring Body Mass Index, that language has been included in the new policy.
Into this one?
Yes.
Right. But the physical language has been.
Well, it does still talk about a candidate for a school athletic team.
It talks about physicals. We just, we struck out the part about the school physician.
Right.
Will examine. We're not offering that opportunity.
That's correct.
Right.
We are not, we.
Okay.
Question, what is JLCA?
Isn't that just the code?
That's just the code that the mask uses when they categorize all of the policies.
Okay. I mean, we don't normally have those codes on our policies. Do we really?
Yeah, we do.
Every single one?
And none of them really make any sense. Oh, they do? Okay.
So, I will change. Do we have a motion to accept the JLCA Physical Examinations of Students policy?
So moved.
Second.
Can I just ask one question?
You may.
Why are we replacing this policy with this one?
Just based on masks' recommendation that they have this new policy, this, this this, this physical examination of students includes, you know, eye exams and hearing. And so, it's kind of just puts all of those exams into one policy, along with BMIs being one of them.
All right, so we don't have any other policies that already talk about physical exams at certain levels like this one does?
Not that I am aware of. I can double-check that.
No, that's all right. I mean, just, okay, all right, sorry.
So we have the motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying 4-0-0. We now have the PACTS Scholarship Subcommittee. So this is going to be a new Subcommittee for the PACTS Scholarship, and I believe this is the Subcommittee looking into how we are awarding the scholarship. Or to whom we are awarding the scholarship? Oh, this is on the financial side of it?
I believe the high school has, has...
You've got that, okay.
And it's oriented the scholarship towards STEM. And it's, in fact, functioning because it will be awarding its first scholarship, scholarship night this spring.
Great.
Which is great.
So, so this Subcommittee was about maintaining the investment?
This is how we manage the investments so that the amount of the scholarship that, that the high school is awarding can be done every year. Because if we just rely on simple money market rates and keep it in a saving, the equivalent of a savings account, it will get smaller and smaller and smaller, and we want to actually invest it. Which, thankfully, the treasurer has indicated he is open to that occurring. Now, what I think, and this can, this can wait until the actual Subcommittee meets, but I think we want to get the Investment Club, or what?
DECA probably would be the most appropriate.
Some, there's a high school club that is oriented towards financial investing. And I think it would be a great opportunity to have them not make the decisions, but make, hear the decision-making process, and ask questions, make, give us advice, et cetera, et cetera. Because it's, it's probably a unique situation for us in the sense that we actually have control of over $700,000.
Is it unusual that school committee members, that may change? Would be on a committee that would do that type of job? Have that responsibility, I should say.
That's a fair, that's a fair question, because there is some change. Which, in my mind, it simply means that when people leave that committee, someone else needs to be appointed to take their place. So, that's not any different than any other committee.
It's not, but...
No, but this requires an area of expertise that some people may not possess, correct? Who's guiding the, who is ultimately guiding or making the decision? It would come to the whole committee.
It'd be John Foster.
I was about to say, the good news about that is that ultimately, by law, the treasurer would have the fiduciary responsibility. Now, he has indicated he's more than willing to take our recommendations, and in fact, he would be happy to have, have them. So I think we're off the hook with respect to expertise because if for some reason the committee goes in the wrong direction, John, John, or whoever the treasurer is, can say, "Go back to the drawing board," for whatever reason.
Well, that's good. So this is more of an advisory?
Legally, it's an advisory. But John actually recommended that we put this together because I don't, because I don't think he actually wants to play the role of figuring out how to invest it.
And if this Subcommittee, so in theory, say this Subcommittee was to fall apart for some reason, the treasurer would always be there to back it up?
Oh, good.
Okay.
Now, the one problem is, I candidly, publicly, I'll say, I think John is fantastic. But I don't think he actually gets to do all that much creativity with respect to investing, by law, okay? So it'll be interesting to see what recommendations we make and whether he has the ability to actually act on them, but, until we make them. But the, let's not get lost in, in the weeds. The simple fact is, if we want to give away three $12,000 scholarships on an annual basis, now, initially, it won't be that much, but come year four, it will be that much on an annual basis. We've got to invest that money. We cannot rely on simple savings account interest to be able to do that. We'd literally have to cut it, cut it probably in third, by a third, if we wanted to do that. This, it's simple, I'm getting into the weeds, I apologize, and then I'll stop. A simple and normal endowment, in fact, some pension funds would love to be able to say this, only relies on a 5% return on capital, on your principal, okay? Historically, that's easy to achieve. What happens with pension funds is they start to give away too much money, and they have to invest to make 7% or 8%. Now you get in trouble because you make risky investments, et cetera, et cetera. But the reverse is also true. If you're trying to give away 5%, and you simply rely on money market funds, for example, you can't do it, okay? So I think, as long as we're in this for the long term, and I'm fairly certain that the PACTS would agree with this, if we want to have an endowment for these scholarships, we need to invest it prudently, prudently. And I emphasize that word. So I think it's a great experience for students to be involved in this. Great, I mean, we already do some financial literacy, thank you. And this would be a great augmentation of that.
So we'd be looking for two committee members?
Because it has to be two, doesn't it?
So...
Can't be more than two.
No, can't be more than two. So I'm thinking I may have one volunteer sitting by left?
We do.
Okay.
Jamie's saying we have one person.
Anyone else who would, what's that?
Jamie's saying we do have one committee with one person, but you want more than one.
Oh, that's true.
True. Would anyone else like to join this committee?
I'm too conservative, you don't want me.
Well, I would...
You don't want me?
I would be, I would, I would actually think the superintendent should be on this committee.
Sure.
Unless he wants, although we also have a finance director, who I wouldn't rule out, as, as an appropriate person, but that's up to you.
Me, the superintendent, or the superintendent's...
Designee, or, okay, all right.
Because she's not here tonight, and she can't...
And since everybody's anticipating about three interest rate cuts this year, this is a great time to be deciding how we're going to invest it before interest rates go down.
So do we have to vote on this Subcommittee to approve it?
We have in the past, yes.
Okay. So do I have a motion to create this PACTS Subcommittee? And Mr. Swett has volunteered to be the school committee representative?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying 4-0-0. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
All right, any other business?
Have you, just out of curiosity, have you already figured out who's going to get it? I don't want to know, obviously.
No, the application's not due until, until the end of April. But we'll know shortly after vacation.
Okay.
We like to give the kids during vacation time to get the...
So if you could be thinking about who you'd like to be student representatives on this?
I'm going to talk to the business department and get some names.
Thank you. I'll just remind members of the committee